Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight to the February 18th meeting of the Greenwood County Council. Your county council has been in executive session since 4:00 PM today and in keeping with our kind of our new policy, I'm going to ask the county manager to inform the public as to why we had the need to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, we entered into executive session for the following eight matters. Five legal matters pertaining to a local board appointment, tax lien issued near Highway 10, a special tax district near Highway 246 and Willett Road, Greenwood County Policy 6.03, and the populated of the Greenwood County Board of Assessment. Two personnel matters pertaining to a position in the tax office and in the county administration, and one contractual matter pertaining to McCormick area transit.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And we do have action to take coming out of executive session in regard to sick leave policy 6.03, and I think Councilwoman Griffin, you have a statement that you need to make on that. Please, ma'am, a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we make an exception to the county's sick leave and sick bank policy 6.3, Section 5, to allow an employee to donate 24 hours of sick leave to an employee in the coroner's office who would otherwise be ineligible for this donation.
Ms. Griffin, I apologize to you. I didn't exit us from executive session before doing that. I need a motion, please, from council for us to exit. Mr. Templeton, second by Ms. Griffin. Ms. Griffin, please, if you would, yes, and all in favor of that exit, please. So we're out of executive session. Ms. Griffin, if you would, please, please recite that.
I move that we make an exception to the county's sick leave and sick bank policy 6.3, Section 5, to allow an employee to donate 24 hours of sick leave to an employee in the coroner's office who would otherwise be ineligible for this donation.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have both motion and second. We've had discussion. Is there any further discussion or any questions before we vote?
Just want to make this clear. This is going against the current ordinance that we have in our policy right now. This is an exception to the current policy.
Yes, if we vote in favor of this action, we will be voting an exception to our current standing policy. Are there any other questions or any other comments? So we're going to vote on this. I'm going to ask that all in favor of voting for an exception to this policy, please signify by raising your right hand. And any opposed, that motion fails. Thank you. Four, three. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point now, we always begin our meeting with the pledge of allegiance and a prayer. Our invocation tonight will come from Ms. Griffin. Ms. Griffin, please, if you would, please stand with me.
I think I've, I think it got my.
Oh, sorry. It is, it is Mr. Alas.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings. We thank you for your presence being with us tonight. We ask that your presence rest upon us. You give us wisdom and insight and knowledge about the things we need to know, that we will make decisions that are in the best interest of those who you have so graciously given us the privilege to represent. We pray that all we do will be pleasing in your sight and that you would rest upon us tonight and give us that wisdom. In your name we do ask it, in the name of Jesus, and everyone said.
Amen.
Amen.
Would you join us in place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a, we have no old business to take into effect tonight. We do have a, excuse me. I always do that. I'm setting a new record. I've made about three mistakes in about three minutes, so everybody's keeping a tally. I trust that you've all had a chance to look over the minutes of our last meeting. I need a motion, please, to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify. Thank you very much. We have.
Hold on. The reason why I'm staying is because I wasn't here for that meeting, so that's why I didn't.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have no, we have no old business and no presentations tonight. We'll move into a period of public hearing now. We'll have public hearing to receive comments regarding a contract for the sale by Greenwood County of a portion of 223 Park Avenue Greenwood, South Carolina Tax Map Number 6845-854-839, and 600 Monument Street Greenwood, South Carolina Tax Map Number 6845-871-833, and to Greenwood County, a portion of 215 Park Avenue Greenwood, South Carolina Tax Map 6845-862-846. And Ms. Carson Penny, do you want to advise us on that, please?
Yes. And you do need to enter into the public hearing.
I need a motion to enter into public hearing, please. Thank you, Mr. Templeton. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. All in favor, please. I'm really setting new records tonight. I promise you all, I'm eventually going to get better at this. Maybe. Okay, so we've now opened the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in favor of, in favor in regard to this matter?
Yeah, I will, if no one else will. Just, okay, Susan, do we have the map up there? It's okay if we don't. They have it in their packet. Yeah.
Yes, I have it.
That's okay. You have a draft survey, and it is essentially for everybody that's just familiar with Park Plaza and the Callison Dorn Building next door that face the courthouse. What we're talking about here is technically a land sale, but it's a swap between the Park Plaza, between Greenwood County, but between the Park Plaza property and the Callison Dorn Building property next door, which is owned by J&amp;P Holdings. And it is a .9 acre swap, and it is one part of their parking lot so that we have more room at what will be the front of our office when the Park Plaza renovations are done. There will be more room for us to have the tower, the nice looking tower. And so they swapped that part of their parking lot with something on, on the other side, actually. I misspoke. It's not the Park Plaza property. It's the property on the other side of the Callison Dorn Building, the J&amp;P Holdings building, that is also owned by Greenwood County. And so we give them, for what they've given us, we give them another place that they can have a parking lot. And we've set it up. We have a draft contract that I've given to J&amp;P Holdings that offers to pave that parking lot for the employees that are in that building. So it's not an exact swap because we're going to end up paying more money, but they're being essentially lovely neighbors by swapping for us so that we can have a nicer entrance to our building. And so that's what this is about. We have to have a public hearing under 49130, which we'll hear more about later in different contexts. We have to have a public hearing because we are, this is technically a sale, and even if it were a swap, I'd still want us to have a public hearing. So that's what this public hearing is about. I am in favor of it. I recommend it. I think this is, this is good, and J&amp;P is being a great neighbor by doing this for us.
They certainly are, and staff did good work in bringing that forward. So having heard the explanation from Ms. Penny, and because this is a public hearing, is there anyone here who would speak in opposition to what we have proposed? So seeing none.
I'll give a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. .
I second.
You didn't give me an opportunity to do the right thing there, Mr. Templeton. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please. And that's unanimous, and the public hearing is closed.
I'll give you a motion to approve.
Yeah, so, yeah, if council, if council has any comments or questions in regard to what Ms. Penny explained.
I do have one, Mr. Chairman. It would be, I think you referenced that paying for a parking lot to pave the parking lot.
Yes.
Is that expense covered in the renovation cost that we currently have for the Park Plaza building? Is included in that? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman?
I'll give you a second, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving now, moving now into new business.
Hold on.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to have the trainer answer the question that the councilwoman asked, because I think she has a different answer. We don't vote for it now.
I'm not sure that that cost has been included in our work with Reg John at this point. We're still, but we're still working through a lot of costs with Reg John trying to get to that, that grand total price that we've agreed on, which is the high point of $15 million for everything. So I feel like, I feel like, yes, it will come in, in that total package, but at this point, I don't think we've gotten that exact number on it to say, yes, it's included.
That answers my question. And too, it's going to be included in the cost in some form or fashion. It will be in that project, basically, the cost of that project.
To tell you how much it is singularly and that we've approved that specific cost, so it's a yes and no answer, I think.
Thank you.
Ms. Dorn, thank you for clarifying that. I do want the record to reflect that that was a mistake that I did not make, by the way. We keeping score now? Moving, yeah, I am. So moving, moving into our new business, we have discussion regarding the appointment to the Cornerstone Board of Commissioners and County Manager. You're going to address that.
Council members, you have in your packet a list of Cornerstone board appointments. You have six of the entire board. The entire board is 12. You have six of the 12. There are currently two vacancies that need to be filled in the county council. I believe you have some potential applicants in your packet.
We, we do have, do we have, and I'm sorry. Excuse me. Who is the name of the candidate we are going to vote on, please?
Betty Pinkney.
Yes. So, so you've heard the recommendation for the appointment. I will need a motion and a second before we can vote on that. For Ms. Pinkney.
Yeah, a motion for Ms. Pinkney.
Motion from Ms. Miller, second from Mr. Templeton. All in favor, please, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next order of business is receiving petitions for the establishment of Ferncliff, for Ferncliff neighborhood as a special purpose tax district, and our treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Dorn, will address that, please.
I believe the county man, uh, county attorneys will handle that.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we have Mr. Danny Talent with us today. He is here on behalf of the Ferncliff Homeowners Association, from what I understand.
Correct.
That's technically.
I'm the HOA president.
And so he is here, under our policy 10.5, to present a petition that he has been responsible for and taking around that should have, that I think he's proceeding under the 15% of registered voters. And correct me if I'm wrong, Danny, jump in anytime with that microphone if I ever misstate anything.
I'm loud enough. Everybody can hear me.
Okay. That he's proceeding under the 15% of registered voters provision of policy 10.5, and, which would mean that if you accept his petition and you believe that, that he has captured 15% of the registered voters in his, in this potential district, then you would certify that to the county election commission, and then they would proceed with having an election to decide whether or not there would be a Ferncliff special tax district. Does that make sense?
Yes.
As you understand it. And do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just, getting to Mr. Chairman, members of board. This special tax district, we really, really need this special tax district because we have incurred some damage to our dam and the road. And it's for 10 families, roughly 30 people. It's our only way in and out. So, you know, pursuant to code of law, according to code of law, 4-9-30, which Carson referenced earlier, and Greenwood County Policy 10.5. We, I went through and talked to Leland at voters restoration. We have roughly 74 registered voters in our neighborhood, and I have 20, so that was 74, about 16 signatures that I would need. I have 24 to 28. And I wanted to enter this to council for your blessings and have it certified.
Okay, thank you. Danny, I have a question though before.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on. Thank you for being here, and we were all, discussed this at length, but you just said you're representing the HOA. For clarity, is there an established HOA for Ferncliff?
Yes, sir.
There is.
Yes, sir. We, I can send the bylaws to whoever. The covenants and restrictions are on file at the courthouse. They've been on file since 2004.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, we've discussed this at length. Are there any, are there any questions or any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Were you elected as the chairman or as the president?
Yes, co-president. Yeah, there's two of us because it was a huge undertaking.
Okay, so you have two members, and you were elected. When did y'all, when were y'all elected?
So.
Do you have records of that election?
Yes, sir.
You did, okay.
Yeah, and this even in our bylaws. Yeah, Doug Bell did our bylaws for us, and Bill Tinsley did our covenants and restrictions. Back then, we had to get 75% of the property owners to agree to change the covenants and restrictions, and after we got that certified, we followed with the Greenwood County Department Court.
So you sent notice to every property owner. All the property owners were notified that you were going to have an election for the HOA?
Yeah, we had meetings because at that time, there was no established homeowners association. The developers at the time controlled everything that went on in the development, and the property owners didn't have any say so. So we formed our own homeowners association and the developers, with the developers' blessings. And that, like I said, that was back in 2004, mid, well, first part of 2004.
2004.
2004, yeah.
Okay.
So 21 years ago.
And y'all have handled regular meetings?
What, yeah, we, we were, we were having regular meetings, and, you know, in order to tackle any business and have any votes, you have to have a core of 50%.
Yes.
Well, the last four or five meetings we've had, we had less than 10 people there to represent four or five properties. So we never had a core. Then we had several, we had a couple officers move out, and we didn't really have meetings there for a while. And then this all came about after a hurricane.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? So, no? So just for clarity, and you've heard the explanation from our, from our attorney, what you're asking for tonight is simply for the county council to, to vote to approve that you can move forward with the, with asking our elections, elections commission to have a special election in which that, your, your program could be approved, correct?
We have a special tax district, yes, sir.
Yes, for a special program. Correct, attorney?
And I would just say that in addition to asking for that, it's dependent upon us checking and making sure those are the right signatures of people that actually live there. But assuming that that is true, moving forward.
So, Ms. Alas.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So just for the record, what happens now is if we vote for this and we approve this, then it takes a 50% vote of the neighborhood.
Well, it's just like any election. So it becomes, it goes to a special election, and it's noticed, just like any other election, like the presidential election. It is, it is noticed in the papers, and it is handled by the, by Connie Rudy's staff, by the election commission, and it'll be, you know, 50% plus of whomever votes in that neighborhood.
Gotcha.
Right.
Has to be 50 or greater of the neighbors.
Or actually more than 50.
Oh, well, of the voters, no, sir.
Of just the people who show up to vote that day.
That's right.
Just like a presidential election.
If 10 people show up.
10 people show up, they got to get six, they got to get six votes.
Six people vote yes, about four people vote no, it passes.
It's all dependent on turnout.
Yeah, yeah. And I take that back. It's not just like a presidential election. It'd be like one of your elections.
Yeah.
And then I guess people who were in favor or in opposition can campaign, put signs up, vote no, and I guess.
Their signs have to be at Berkeley and proper within the ordinance, but yes.
Yeah, I guess that's how it works.
Again, just like one of our elections.
Just like one of your elections.
Just getting a feel of where we go from here, just for the record.
Yes. Excellent.
Where we go from here. Thank you.
So, council, you've heard that. If no further questions or discussions, I'll need a motion for us to move forward and to have, we need to vote on this.
Motion to move forward.
I'll second. Have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Pruitt. So let's vote on this. All in favor of granting the petition to move forward, please signify by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Danny.
You do, I. Thank you.
Item C under new business is consideration of the approval to participate in an ambulance supplemental payment program with public consulting group and allow the county manager to sign related documents after county, after our county attorney gives approval on it. It's that, Ms. Dorn, you're going to cover that for us.
And thank you, council and chairman, oh, chairman and council, Dorn. I have my friend, Derek Oliver, the director of the EMS, if you have any questions when we get through this, this program. So he's my, he's my backup. tonight. But this is a program that, as you see, is ambulance supplemental payment program, a mouthful, but we'll call it ASPP. And it's related to the Medicaid trips that our ambulances take. And so, currently, what happens, and you may remember, we've had some conversations last year related to Medicare, so this is Medicaid. And the, the amount that we receive back from the Medicaid program is not 100% of what we bill out. And so, we come up, oftentimes come up short. And as you see there, typically, we're only getting about 20% of what everybody else is, is paying. And so, we're having to supplement the, the cost of that program. The way that this particular program works is it allows us to bring down an additional federal share on the cost of this, of these ambulance trips. And as you see here, the example that they've given you, if we had a $1,200 cost for an ambulance trip, we only receive about $200. And so, we're out $1,000 that, that we should have been, if it were anybody else, that we would have potentially obtained that additional $1,000. So, that's kind of going back on the, the back of our county taxpayers through our special appropriations tax where we supplement the EMS fund. And so, as you see there, the, for fiscal year '25, the share that South Carolina can receive from, from the federal government is an additional 70%. And you see, it says state, and then it says your agency. So, state's not giving us any additional funds, but we can capitalize and realize an additional $836 in this example. This is not every ambulance trip from the federal government. So, this company is called the Public Consulting Group, and they have started these programs in states all across the country. And they worked specifically with the state of South Carolina's Health Services Agency to get this program underway in South Carolina. So, there's a lot of, of backwork that had to go on with, working with the federal government to get the program approved and instituted. And so, you can see there that they started out in Texas on behalf of the city of Austin, and then now they have worked with over 550 departments getting this program underway. And then, as I said, specifically have worked with the state. We have a letter from the state of South Carolina, the Healthy Connections Program related to Medicaid, confirming this information from PCG. So, again, you see, they've been working on this program since 2019, and it took until last year for them to actually start receiving payments. There are eight agencies that received payments in last year. And so, we want to get on board and start receiving our fair share of what's available to us through the federal government. So, what we would like to do is to implement this program using PCG as the provider. And what they do is they collect really a minimal amount of information from us. They collect our expenditure information, which is just our general ledger for the EMS fund, collect information on depreciation related to the equipment that is used by EMS. And then they receive a lot of billing information from our billing company, and then they'll also get information from our 911 dispatch out of the CAD system related to Medicaid calls, things like time of dispatch, time of the final call, whether they went to the hospital, what was the disposition of the call. They will take all of that data from us and put that information into the data that's required for the federal government. And if you've ever worked with the federal government, that's never easy. And so, they're going to take all of that work off of us that we honestly don't have the staff to do, to do this with. And I would point out that EMS MC is our billing company. Some of you might not realize that's how that works. We pay them a percentage of collections, and they do all of the billing for us for our EMS trips. So, they will provide this data to PCG for us at no additional cost to us. So, what we're already paying them for, for their collection fee, that will cover them providing this data. So, the interesting part of this is with the federal government, again, nothing's ever easy. As long as you follow the steps, they will work, the system will work. And so, you see, the description here is that we provide the service, and then we will have to actually send Medicaid 20, our match every quarter. And then, that money goes to the federal Department of Health Services, and then they'll send us back, our share back, and the federal government's share, which is odd, but we got to send them our match, and then they send it back to us. New, new kind of thing from the way that I've dealt with them before. But this is an example, this is based on our fiscal '23 data. And so, what we will be providing to them here shortly, if you all agree for our participation in this program, is our fiscal '24 data. And then we will realize those payments in fiscal '26. So, there's a lag in, in the time of the, the calls and when we'll receive the funds. And so, you see here, those transports, we had approximately, well, exactly 1,390 Medicaid transports in fiscal '23. The fiscal '25 state-directed payment for those trips, $397. And so, the funding that we should have received was $551, and 551, 830. All we were receiving was the state's contribution. But we were eligible for an additional federal share of 300, roughly $385,000. So, if we participate in this program, we will get over the, again, based on fiscal '23 data, if we have similar numbers for fiscal '24, we would receive a $385,000 of additional funding, less the 10% fee that PCG will charge us for providing, for taking our data and providing it to the federal government. So, 10% of that's $38,000, so roughly $350,000 of new money that we would receive if we participate in this program. The only, the only disadvantage of the program is that we have to write that check in advance, but then within about six or eight weeks, we receive it back in addition to the federal share. So, really a win-win in, in that situation.
Pay the fee in advance?
We paid, we paid the, so we've already gotten our money back from the state, and that's the match that the federal government requires. So, we send them the match, and then they send their share plus our match back to us. So, it just goes, goes in a circle. So, it's a cash flow, right? If you look at that, we're going to, based on this information, they would send us, the state DHHS would send us an invoice every quarter for roughly $42,000. And then, about six or eight weeks later, we'll get a check back for $137,000.
The federal government's going to turn it around that quick.
That's what they tell us. And they, they've got-
I see Rob back there smiling because we haven't been that fortunate with the FEMA.
The season FEMA.
Yeah, so-
And it's not first.
I just struggle to believe that a little bit right now.
Well, and we, and I would say we are familiar with, with the federal government from the standpoint of, we receive payments now from them related to trips that are funded and paid for under the Veterans Program. So, we do receive federal money for different, not Medicaid, but for different trips that we are receiving. And I think Medicare comes from the feds or does come through the state, comes from the feds. So, we are receiving money routinely from them in a frequent, with that kind of frequency.
Is this causing any burden on your office, any additional? There's something, I know additional, but is it an undue burden, or can you accommodate the extra work involved?
Yeah, as I said, the only thing we have to provide them is a general ledger for the EMS fund for the fiscal year, which will take me about five minutes to run. And then a depreciation report for the equipment that is used in EMS department, which might take about 10 minutes. The bigger ask will be with Jill, I don't know if you've talked with her yet.
Not yet.
The bigger ask will be on the, the trips out of dispatch, which I would, I would think wouldn't be a huge lift on her behalf of the-
CAD reporting. Comes out of CAD reporting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Ms. Dorn, do you know, do we know of any other counties that are, have already done this, or?
We have these, Berkeley County, Darlington County, Florence County, Kershaw Ambulance Service, Lee County, Marlborough, Spartanburg, Senter.
Have we talked to anybody to see how?
Not yet. I'm working on going to speak with them about it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good question, because I just assumed y'all had talked to them if their names were up here because just make sure it goes smoothly.
This, this all started last week. Well, I'll take that back. Derek has been talking to me about this for two years probably, that, that he knew that they were working on this, they were working to get the program set up. Basically, the state of South Carolina had to get everything in line with the federal government so that we could then participate as an individual agency. And so, the notification came to us last week, and we want to go ahead and get on board, and we're on a very short timeline. We have to get everything to them. We're really supposed to have it by the end of February, but by the end of March at the latest. If we don't miss, if we don't make that deadline, then we won't get this funding in FY '26, and we'll have to wait another year. And so, that's why we're standing in front of you all the night, so that we could go ahead and tell them that counsel is either in favor or not in favor of participating, with the caveat, of course, that the paperwork that we have to sign is signed off and agreed on by the county attorney, so that we don't have any delays in being able to participate. Now, obviously, if we talked with any of these counties and they said, you would be crazy to sign these documents, then we would, we would pump the brakes and, and proceed with it. But it, it's, it's been working elsewhere, and like I said, Derek's had multiple conversations with both this company and EMS MC that provides our billing services. They're doing this in other states. I think EMS MC has been providing, has been participating in this with PCG in other states as well. And they have not had any concerns with us, you know, joining in with the program.
One other question for me is, I know it says fiscal year '25, so that's wrapping up in June?
Right, so this, this is the funds that they achieved for these agencies in '25. We will not receive funding until '26.
Right, for the data, for the past year's activity.
For the '24, '24 data will give us 26 numbers.
So, you know where I'm going with this. So, with everything happening now in Washington, have y'all had any conversations about the future of this funding?
We have not. I think with any federal program, there's always question marks of whether it continues. I don't want to say that anything is safe in the federal government, but when you talk about programs like Medicaid and Medicare, those are probably some of your safer programs because you're going to have a lot more conflict if you start trying to make changes in those programs. Most legislative-
I guess the possibility exists that there could be some reduction in this, but that would be an animal for a different day.
Right.
So, counsel, any other questions or comments? Director Oliver and, and Ms. Dorn, thank you for bringing this to us. And I would say that as, as has been pointed out, we don't know what the future may hold, but let's take the savings now would be my position on this.
What my recommendation is, is that we would use these funds not for recurring costs like salaries, but for capital costs. We currently have, how many ambulances?
12.
12 ambulances, and they have all been outfitted once, and so, we're in a position where we need to, to begin replacing the ambulances, not all 12 of them, but the majority of them. And so, that's, my recommendation is that we use these for our capital needs and start working through replacing our ambulances. This could get us to a year with that funding level. And then that way, to your point, Ms. Miller, if something happens to the funds, we aren't in a position where we then have to figure out where we get the money from. We're using it for something that, that we have quite honestly been struggling to figure out how to fund for the last few years.
That's a very prudent plan, as yours always are, by the way. Thank you so much. So, counsel, having heard that, that proposal, we're going to have to have a, a vote on this. I would entertain a motion and a second, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer your motion. We entered a contract with PCG. Can I say contention upon you checking with these eight counties to make sure that-
Yes.
They have any, no issues?
I'll second.
I know you said if you had, you'd pull it, so just wanted to throw that in.
Yes, sir.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Templeton, and a second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my hand didn't go far enough.
Did I vote for you? I'm sorry.
No, I was waiting for the discussion.
I'm sorry, I thought we were done with the discussion.
I agree.
Next order of business is a consideration of approval for three-year contract extension for our audit contract with Manley Garvin. Stephanie, you still here?
I'm still here.
You're still here.
I didn't need the extra exercise tonight, I just thought it's dead. Well, we came out for a bid back in 2021. Manley Garvin gave us a total of six years in their proposal. Just as a reminder, state statute only allows you to sign a contract for three years at a time for your audit services. And their price for all six years was exactly the same for both the basic audit and the single audit, which we always seem to, to qualify for, which is based on our federal, federal funding that we receive. And so, if you recall, last time, they were the only local bidder, and they were the lowest-priced bid. So, I would recommend that you approve the extension of the three-year contract, and that will cover the fiscal year that we are in, '26 and '27.
I'll offer your motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, so all in favor of voting to-
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Before we vote, Ms. Dorn, if, if I'm correct, and I could be wrong, I remember that you said when we approved their contract the last time, that it was kind of a protocol or a good policy to rotate those auditors.
Yes, sir.
If I'm correct, I believe you gave us a recommendation that it might be time to do that.
Yes, sir, I did, and-
So, my question would be why now?
Because the majority of counsel disagreed with my recommendation, and it seemed to be important to this counsel to have a provider that was within Greenwood County, and as they are the only ones who provide this service, I did not think that it was worth wasting my time or the auditor's time to do another proposal. But if that's what counsel wishes, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. So, you're comfortable going another, I mean, I mean, you're the treasurer, and I want to hear you say that you are comfortable going another three years. You feel comfortable with that, and feel like that we're getting done what needs to be done in these audits, and you're comfortable with it?
I do not have any problems with the services they're providing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dorn. So, if we want to proceed with the, the three-year extension of this contract, I'll entertain a motion, please.
We actually have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. You're still with us.
I'll sit down if you want me to. I'm here, I am here at your, what's the exact word? Your pleasure. I'm here at your pleasure. So, we are looking, Oliver-
So, we are working, all of our departments are currently working on their fiscal twenty-six budget request with a completion deadline on March the third, at which point my office will take over and begin review and meetings with the departments. Susan will soon be reaching out to all of you to schedule a meeting over the next, not this week, but the next two weeks, to review your goals and objectives, so we make sure that we incorporate any of those as we work through the budget. We are almost done with our transition to South State Bank, we will have a couple of accounts that stay open just until we give any outstanding checks and opportunity to clear. And we should have all of that closed out by the end of this fiscal year. Through the end of January, we have collected almost ninety-two percent of our real and personal property taxes that have been billed. Last January, we had about ninety percent, so very close. Property taxes make up about forty-seven percent of our general fund budget, so it's important that we see those collections coming in at that, at that level. Our automobile and boat taxes are also coming in higher than, I shouldn't say also, they are coming in higher than projected. And we also are having strong interest earnings due to the economic environment that we're in right now. Our hospitality tax collections are just over six percent higher than the same period of last fiscal year. These are your receipts from June through December from restaurants. And our local accommodations tax collections, we've talked about this the last three months, due to what we know were probably a lot of people staying in hotels from the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, they are twenty-seven percent higher than the prior fiscal year. We have five months left of the CPST to be collected, that will come into additional payments. And then, of course, our next CPST that our voters approved will come, will begin. So, I'll report on those two separately once, once those collections begin. Our transportation program, in January, our trips totaled two thousand two hundred and forty-eight trips. That was just thirty-one under our highest volume, which was in August of last year, so we continue to still have a strong ridership in that program. And our next meeting on March the fourth, we will have some items in front of you related to continuing our transportation program with math. And finally, our building permit data, new construction permits are seventy-five percent of all residential permits and three percent of commercial permits issued to date. Our residential permit values are about four and a half million more than through January of last fiscal year. But our commercial permits are about forty-four point two million less than the same period in last year, which is a direct correlation into actual permit revenue being about seventeen percent less than the same period in last fiscal year. However, we did account for that when we budgeted, so that is not a budgetary concern at this point. Be glad to answer any questions that you're going to have.
Counsel? Questions, thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Next order of business, consideration of policy to handle vegetated debris at County Landfill, Mr. Rob Rushen.
So, two items on the agenda tonight, kind of back-to-back here, both related. First, a policy on vegetated debris. The Greenwood County Public Works, of course, is governed by both ordinances. At policy, our actual ordinance doesn't actually mention vegetated debris at all, just it kind of ignores it, doesn't define it. So, without the ordinance speaking to it, we go to a series of policies, both written, unwritten, with some approved by council and some not, kind of a hodgepodge. So, what the hurricane has done is kind of look at those policies, and as we get into the next item, wanted to present to council a formal written policy that would govern all of our acceptance of vegetated debris, kind of consolidate all those regulations. And then, it would cover curbside pickup and then drop-off service at both our convenience sites and the Greenwood County landfill. As council is probably aware, landfill operates under the enterprise fund, largely supported by the landfill fee of seventy dollars, charged to what we call low-volume generators, and tipping fees at the landfill scale house itself, which is at twenty-six dollars a ton. We'll define low-volume generators here in a minute. But for that seventy dollars for our low-volume generators, that covers your trash disposal in the landfill, our convenience sites, our recycling curbside, and our leaf and limb curbside service. So, there's a wide variety of services we provide to low-volume generators for just seventy dollars. I'd ask you to keep that in mind as we go through this policy, that the services that we are providing in this policy kind of match that, that fee. So, in looking at the policy itself, does anybody not have the policy in front of them, I'm going to refer to certain sections, if you'd like, we do have printed policies. Okay, you already have, okay, so you have the printed policies in front of you, just, I'm going to go through it just real quickly. Again, most of what is in this policy is already, we're already doing, I'll try to point out what we're not currently doing, whether that was a written policy or not, unwritten policy or a formal policy, most of it we're already doing. So, low-volume generators, any, again, for the purposes of policy, anybody who's charged a landfill fee on your current tax year property taxes, low-volume generators in the ordinance is defined as someone who's serviced by a container of less than two cubic yards. So, if you have a normal trash can out there, that's about a half cubic yard, you can have two or three of them for your net, and that move up to the next level, and then you are not charged a landfill fee. But purposes of the policy, low-volume generator, those who are charged a landfill fee, that's seventy dollars. And then, vegetated debris is exactly what it sounds like, trees, branches, shrubs, anything that falls in that category. First, we're going to talk about the roadside collection of vegetated debris, this is where we come to your house, pick up debris in front of your house, okay? Service we provide through our leaf and limb program. Again, we've been doing it for many, many years now. This policy, again, is mostly the same as what council approved in two thousand and four, this is one of the few areas where council actually approved a policy. It is over twenty years old, we have stuck to it for twenty years, on the six, a little bit dated, we're just going to, you know, polish up the edges here, but it's essentially the same policy. Again, single-family residential properties outside of any incorporated area that we serve, essentially, anywhere in the county or outside of incorporated area, you called in, we'll come pick it up. I'm going to jump all the way down to number seven there, again, this is everything that we have done previously. But in number seven, we make a little change to the size of the material, where vegetated debris should be no longer than four feet in length. Our previous rule was six inches in diameter, we typically pick up larger than that, we're going to eight inches in diameter there. So, we're giving some larger sizes. Again, the rest of this, pretty much standard. On the next page, on number nine, this is something that we have allowed in the past, we are currently down to only two current locations that we do this for, but it addresses community debris piles as prohibiting those piles, meaning a group of people, a group of houses in a certain, can't have a community pile where everybody places their debris there. This has been an absolute terror for us to try to deal with, the property it's on, nobody knowing who put the stuff there, going over the limit, over the size limit, huge piles, trash, contractors dumping into it, community piles essentially lead to just, just bad operations all the way out. We have gotten those down to just two piles, we're on the verge of getting rid of those two, but I thought we were down to one, but no one brought up one this afternoon. But this policy would eliminate those community piles, and we would work to get rid of those last two community piles, yes, sir.
You're saying they only have two situations to that in the entire county?
In the entire county, we used to have a lot more, over the last three or four years, we've eliminated a lot of them. We had an incident in one location where we were just, we were picking up an enormous amount of debris, we put cameras out there, there was contractors dumping at it. In fact, there was only contractors dumping at it, and that was prohibited by our previous policy, we got rid of that one. We've gotten rid of a couple of other ones where it was never approved to be on someone else's property, that sort of thing, so we've got it down to just two county piles, yes.
Thank you.
So, but this policy would eliminate those two, and we'd work with those two, and we still have to get those handled. Other than that, curbside kind of just remains the same of what we're currently doing now. Going to move on to disposal of vegetated debris at our convenience sites, again, we've had signage out there, we've had some written rules, we've had some unwritten rules. But again, convenience sites are for residential use only, as per our ordinance, we're keeping that same thing as it is. A new, our unwritten rule was one pickup truck load a day, which is very subjective, some people have big trucks, smaller, you try to equate that to a trailer, someone bringing them on. So, we're making a four cubic yards of debris per day, per residence, that's a number three there. And that essentially is your biggest pickup truck, which has an eight-foot bed on it, loaded halfway up the top of the cab, over the side rails, halfway to the top of the cab, is four cubic yards, okay, roughly. Again, that's a eight-foot long, five feet wide, and three-foot high pile, whether it's on a trailer, on a pickup truck load, you get four cubic yards a day, per residence at our convenience centers. So, we're just spelling that out as opposed to saying a pickup truck load. The next thing is in number four, this is something we've enforced, we're trying to enforce, debris is not to be piled more than one foot above the top rail of a container at a convenience site. People look at a container, say, "Oh, I can pile more debris on top of that, top that," you get, they'll have arguments with our site attendants, "No, it's full, no, it's not full." We're setting a one foot above the top rail as being completely full. And then, no debris should be left on the ground, this is an actual de-hack rule at our convenience centers, we have allowed it on the ground in the past, we got rid of everything on the ground, everything goes in a container now, we're just spelling it out in the policy. That's really the only changes for the convenience centers at sites. Move on to number four.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
While we're in that section. With you explaining it to us, obviously, I know what four cubic yards is, average Joe is not going to know what four cubic yards is, so I know you're saying it's a pickup truck load. But you also said halfway up the cab. I myself had taken truck, dump truck, excuse me, not dump truck, pickup truck loads in there that were higher than halfway up the cab, and I see it every time I go in there. So, my question is, for average Joe taxpayer, if he rolls in there in a pickup truck and it's loaded, are y'all going to turn him away if it's more than halfway up the cab? Because if you are, this is going to be a major problem for council.
So, again, the, the, the four cubic yard, if you, if you load a, the long, now, nobody hardly has an eight-foot long bed anymore, they're all five and a half foot, six foot long.
Correct.
Okay, so, the tenant gets out there, he sees something piled up above the cab, you can bring a tape measure out, is your cab, is your bed eight foot long? They do this at convenience centers all over the, all over the state, it's, it's something we run in constant when we go these things, but yes. No, they're going to give grace, they're saying it's a pickup truck load, four cubic yards are allowed, but I, we're trying to set an actual amount for cubic yards.
And I get it, and I understand it, I'm just saying, as those of us who are sitting over here, some, some seventy-five-year-old man fills up his pickup truck, and y'all pull the tape measure out on him.
So, the bigger issue.
They not going to be happy.
The bigger issue is the trailer amount, and it's when people bring in trailers, we're, we're kind of the age of the dump trailer now, where everybody has these large dump trailers, you can easily measure dump trucks, say, "Yes, this is allowed here, this is not allowed here, this is how far you can, you can kind of pile it up." But yeah, we'll have some adjustment period with our site attendants in establishing what those four cubic yards are. But a pickup truck load is so ambiguous, we're going with an actual measurement where we can tell people, "Here's four cubic yards."
We'll get happy to push that out, if we approve it.
And we have a nice, we have a nice graphic to it, different pickup truck sizes, and how much you can load, and that sort of thing. All right, on to disposal of vegetated debris at the Greenwood County landfill, again, some written and unwritten policies we've had over the years. Again, for low-volume generators, they can bring up to one load of vegetated debris to the landfill, weighing one ton or less. Now, the landfill, we have a scale there, we can put them on scales, we can see exactly what they weigh, we're going to give them one ton. One ton is typically, just depending on what type of debris, more than four cubic yards, but it's somewhere in that area. You're at the landfill, we don't have to transport, we can take more there without it really bogging down our operation, so it's one ton. Now, the way this is written, this is in addition to the four cubic yards you can take to the convenience center. So, you can take a load to the convenience center, your second load you can take to the landfill, as long as it's less than one ton, and that is free under this policy for your average resident, okay? Once you get beyond that, then you start to have to pay the twenty-six dollars a ton. And again, you think about the, the seventy dollars a year they, they pay in landfill fee, you're getting twenty-six dollar ton free at the landfill, plus an additional load at the convenience center, okay? And again, this is kind of what we currently do now, although we don't limit them, currently, we don't limit a resident to one ton at the landfill. As long as they're bringing it out to landfill, going across the scales, we've, we've had people bring in multiple load after load after load, and after three, four loads, we'll start questioning, "All right, where's this coming from, are you clearing a lot, is this commercial, are you a landscaper?" And most people have to have time to know, you know, you have different circumstances, typically is not just a resident doing some yard work, okay? So.
Well, I have a question, if I were trying to articulate this to my husband, if I were to go in my pickup truck and I've got a trailer behind me, are you saying you cannot do both, you can only do one or the other?
At a convenience site, you can only do four cubic yards, so what you have on both vehicles has to add up to less than four cubic yards. So, no, you can't load up the pickup truck and load up the trailer and take it to the convenience site and load it all. What the site attendant should do is say, "You can unload the pickup truck or the trailer, take the rest to the landfill at the convenience site," which is what we do now. We don't allow both trailer and pickup truck. If you go to landfill with a pickup truck and a trailer, as long as it's less than one ton, you go dump it off, come back, weigh yourself, as long as you're less than one ton, it's free. If it goes over one ton, you get charged the overage of one ton.
So, basically, he would say to this person, "You need to take this load down to the landfill, we can't accept both of them today."
We can accept one, four cubic yards, which is either the pickup truck.
But if you're going to go down there, you might as well go down there and unload at one time.
Correct.
So, and my second question is, I know these are policies, are they enforceable? Is it realistic to say we can enforce these things?
We, I tried to write this along the same lines of what we're, what we're trying to currently enforce now, and yes, it is enforceable. One of the questions I got, well, if they go to one convenience center, can they go to the next? We do have communication between convenience centers, if we have someone who's, who's adamant about, "I'm dumping this, you know, I'm not, whatever, you can't, you got to landfills too much." We do have some communication between convenience centers and the landfill as to who's out there trying to get rid of what out there. But if someone comes in with a big dump truck and a trailer, tries to unload at a convenience center, the call go out, "Hey, I got a white pickup truck with a, you know, black dump trailer trying to load here, keep an eye out for them, I told me I had to go to landfill, he said he wasn't doing it," type deal. So, there is some communication between convenience centers. And yes, we, I tried to write it would be enforceable, but you have a, in most cases, you have a single site attendant, in best case, two site attendants there. We tell them not to argue with someone, get a tag number, that sort of thing, that we will address it afterwards. So, at the landfill, again, low-volume generators, one ton of, one load that is one ton or less, got to be brought by the occupant of the, of the residence or an immediate family member. We get all the time, landscapers are coming in, and, "Oh, you know, this is from a house," or where'd it come from, they give an address, it's not their address, or, or, you know, they're bringing it out for someone else. If you're in the business of landscaping, the original kind of policy or unwritten rule was that you had to pay for disposal at the landfill. There's number three there, some general stuff that's not accepted, that was in the policy from two thousand and four, the council passed. Debris generated from clearing a parcel for development, professional tree removal, commercial landscapers, or any debris from a property not classified as low-volume generator will be charged at the landfill scale house. The next four, five, and six are about your non-typical low-volume generators. When we talk about low-volume generators, we think about it's single-family residents. There are other low-volume generators out there that are not single-family residents, like some businesses, like an accounting firm that might just have a regular trash can. They have some, you know, landscaping on their site, they do their own landscaping, they bring it to the landfill. Again, so a business can be treated just as, like we would a single-family residence. Again, they can bring material out to the landfill themselves or a direct employee, they get the one ton amount. And again, debris hauled by third parties such as commercial landscapers, that sort of thing would be charged. Residents of multifamily properties that are classified as low-volume generators is number five. Again, there are apartment complexes out there that are charged, if there's ten units in the apartment complex, they have ten trashcans out front, they are charged ten landfill fees, okay? And in this case, the resident of that apartment complex, or if you want to say a mobile home park, might be more appropriate, where you might have a mobile home residence who has landscaping they do on their own, they again can bring. landscaping they do on their own, they, again, can bring it out, same rules, the one ton or the, to the landfill free of charge. The owners of multifamily properties can also bring out one ton, all right? They own the property, they pay ten landfill fees, they can bring out one, we've already granted one ton for each resident, we grant the owner one ton as well. And then, let's see, that is number six. I think that is all. It's a bit complicated to try to address all the different situations and the stuff we run into, but it is essentially what we've been doing for a while, we're putting it right in so we can enforce it at the scale house, at the convenience center. Any questions on that?
One question and one comment. The four-foot length, is that what we were doing prior to halene?
Yes.
So, we've returned to the four-foot length?
Four foot, six inch, four foot in length, six inches was our policy before halene.
Uh-huh.
We're sticking with the four-foot length, but the, we're going up to eight inches in diameter of a, of a tree. We're also getting rid of, we had a policy previous, the current policy is two small trees that are no less than six inches in diameter. If someone has a, you know, tree, doesn't matter how many trees it came from, you just have to stay below four foot, below eight inches in diameter. And again, we're not out there with tape measures either, we're picking up a lot of stuff, but that keeps in with our equipment, the ability of our equipment.
So, when we changed it during halene, we extended the length of what, remind me? Eight?
There was some, yeah, there was some extension in there by the director, by the county manager. We did not go by what the actual length was in that correct, we picked up anything our equipment would pick up.
Okay. So, what can our equipment pick up safely and productively, if that makes sense?
So, it all depends on what lengths it's cut into. So, if you, our, our equipment could pick up a four-foot length that's probably a foot to fifteen inches diameter, all right? But now, you're picking up a rather, you know, large piece of trunk, tree, going in, dropping in, it's, it's rough on the equipment, it could pick it up, but it's not something you want to be doing all day long, every day. We chose eight inches as something that a resident would do themselves, and cut up in small enough lengths to put out at the curb side. Again, we're not, this policy isn't necessary for the contractors out there, you know, are dropping twenty-four-inch trees, this is for residents doing normal yard maintenance.
And my, my comment is that, and I appreciate it, you put a lot of effort into this, like, you're an engineer.
Yes, I am.
Very detailed in this. My concern is that, and you used the word complicated, I want something that the normal average Joe can read and understand. So, it seems a bit complicated for somebody to pick it up, go to the, the website and say, "Well, let me just see if I'm going to, you know, and to be able to write, read through all this and understand what the rule is for me to take my debris to the recycling center."
A lot of what's in this policy is, is going to apply to a very small portion of the population. The general resident, your, your single-family resident can bring four cubic yards to the convenience center, which is what they've, a pickup truck load, which is what they've always done. They can bring a ton to the landfill, which typically, they rarely do, but if they have larger projects, they can bring a ton to the landfill. That's going to be kind of the cut-down version of the very views. A lot of these other ones, where we get into the weeds, is because we had experienced them with, say, developers who own multiple homes and have a lot of tenants, and we want to be able to apply kind of a uniform policy to everyone, so we wrote that, some of that complicated stuff in here to make sure we address them as well. Because they are paying that seventy-dollar fee, and they are using the landfill, you know, regularly, with the number of homes that they have. You know, a lot of these, a lot of the homeowners with that rent, or so. Yes, it is complicated, but for the general resident, I think it's, it's fairly simple.
And as you said, I'm, my experience with the convenience centers is, those guys give grace, I mean, they don't want to fight with anybody, and you know, it's like, "Yo, you're overloaded, hey, next time, keep it here." I mean, I think they do a pretty good job of that. So, Rob, this, this vegetative debris policy thirteen point two, so these amendments, are you asking us to approve these tonight? Is that what you would like us to do?
I'm asking you to approve the policy tonight. Our next agenda item is about starting to charge fees again-
Right.
-on vegetative debris. I think it's important we have a policy in place before we start, start charging fees again, so that we know when we-
Correct, I agree.
You know, so it's in stone that we, when we charge and when we don't.
Okay. So, council, having heard that, I'll entertain a motion that we, that we amend this policy.
I will make a motion that we amend it with a caveat that our attendants can articulate the rule to people coming in, that they're well-versed in how to explain this to somebody.
It's, it's going to take a little bit, it's going to take a little bit of training.
Yeah.
But for the most part, they're already doing this, you know, generally.
Second, I have a motion by Ms. Miller, and a second by Mr. Templeton. Any discussion further?
I think the county attorney has something to say.
I, I think the county attorney would prefer that you not use the word "men" and use the word "approve."
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I thought we, I'm sorry, I thought we were amending, okay.
No, I don't think it's possible, because this currently doesn't, Rob.
It is not, no.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a comment.
Thank you.
My only concern is, is this ordinance goes, is effective immediately. I just know there's still a lot of debris in the county. I could fill up a pickup truck of stuff still in my yard, in an area as big as my pickup truck. And so, I just, my concern is, I'm fine with it, I, I understand our situation, I'm in and out of there a lot, and I see commercial haulers that's taking advantage of our situation, there's no doubt about it. They're doing that. But there's still a lot of people who have a lot of debris, they're moving slow because of their age, trying to get it, and I just, I'm fine with the policy. My only concern is, is the effective date of February the eighteenth, is it time to, to do that yet? Or do we need to give it a little more time? Because there is a lot of debris still in our county.
I concur.
That, that, again, I'm, I'm, I'm in my truck all day long in this community, and there's people who are every day out there. And, and you know, to tell him, "You, right, right now, in a present situation, you bring one load a day," I just don't know. And I understand the convenience center, I see that situation too, where one person comes and fills the whole dumpster up, and then nobody else has access to the dumpster. We don't want to do that. I thought, my opinion, that we allow them to go back to the, to the convenience centers with limbs and stuff to earth. I thought they steal the quantities, because I see them, they're filling up. I think we should have, my opinion, we should have said, "Everything goes to the landfill." We charge it, but it's all got to go to the landfill, because I see what you're seeing, they're packing into these convenience centers, and they're overfilling them. So, that's my only concern. I agree, we've got to get it under control, I understand what you're trying to do, and there's no really easy way. It is confusing to a lot of people, and probably even to me too. But you got, you got to measure it, you got to have some kind of system to it. My only concern again is, are we, are we moving a little too soon? Have we got enough of this stuff done yet? So, that's my only objection to it, is do we need to delay this a little bit longer?
I, yeah, I concur with that. I didn't, I didn't vote last time with doing the, doing away with the lean at the timeframe, so, starting with that effective date, I guess I have, I have concerns about that too, because I got pictures while I was in executive session, and I drive all over the county, and there's still a ton of stuff out there on the streets. People, I get more calls about that now, and it's like, it's picked up because they think we're fixing the stock, or we're fixing the charging for it. So, I don't know what DOT or the contractor's doing, but I mean, I hear it every day, that they're riding by my house to go to this rich neighborhood, I hate to say it, and pick up their stuff, and I got four pictures on my email right now, and it's frustrating. So, I'm not comfortable with the eighteenth either, Mr. Allison, just for this piece, but I also want to get that in. I'd like to see you and Abby do some more communication on that, the, the remaining debris, because it's, it's still out there. That's just my two cents.
And to avoid confusion, I know we have another resolution coming up after this one, to talk about, I'd like to see maybe consistent dates, if possible, so people hear that, and they know it's both, and not a date for one, and a different date for another.
Eighteenth here, and March the, whatever, third for the other.
That's a consistent date.
So-
We have a motion in seven.
Well, we have to, we have to change that motion to approve instead of amend, if we're going to do it, as I understood the county attorney.
So, Rob, I got a comment to make. So, having heard the, the concerns, but we're still, we're still utilizing state DOT contract for the large stuff. Do you, do you, is your observation, do you share, or, do you share the opinion that you're hearing about a bigger volume coming out? Because I guess my thought was that most people on their private properties had cleaned up what they were going to clean up, generally.
Well, a couple things. One, the deadline to put material out at the curb side is passed for the DOT contractor, so they're just working, supposed to be working on what's already out there. You're getting a lot of vocalists now, because again, I think it's come to the end, and people think they're being left behind. We've been pleasantly responding, we, we've been pleasantly surprised, we're out there inspecting all the county roads right now, and have not uncovered as many piles as we thought we would. So, I agree with DOT's assessment that they're somewhere around eighty percent complete with pickup, and they still have twenty percent less, and they have a couple weeks left, they said they're going to do it. We do think they're going into March with the, the pickup. But again, we haven't seen as many piles out there when we're documenting on the county roads, but there is, there is still debris out there. Even with this policy in place, people can still bring debris for free, it's just the amount, you know, is, is, is going to be limited to what we've kind of always limited them to. So, again, they still have an option where they can bring out for free a ton at the landfill, you know, pickup truck load, and four cubic yards at the convenience center, is still the general rule. So, it's not like we're completely cutting off, everyone's got to start paying. But for the bigger stuff that you have, yeah, that's, you know, that needs to go to the landfill, it's going to be, and pay. Again, a lot of contractors right now, they're bringing, they're bringing an awful lot of stuff to landfill, where people are paying contractors to clear their, their land and stuff like that. But we're going to get into it in a minute, in, in the resolution, but of our halene debris that's coming into the landfill right now, ninety, over ninety percent of it, like ninety and a half, ninety and a half percent of it, over the last month, is, is being brought in by commercial entities, not residential, all right? So, we have slid over to almost, you know, ninety, ninety-plus percent is commercial that's coming in there now. So, you know, the, the average Joe isn't coming in like they were in the beginning, clearing their properties. It's really swapped over to, you know, almost commercial, totally commercial. That was another point there I was going to make, but I, we're going to show you some graphs, just to show you where we're at here in a minute, and it is, it is still going down, you know, what debris is bringing into landfill, so it is definitely tapering off. We're getting to the end, I, I believe that, but again, we're getting a lot more vocal people, we're still taking a lot of calls, "Hey, you missed me, you haven't hit our neighbor, you haven't hit our road yet." We're also uncovering stuff like, this is a DOT road, you know, no, it's not, it's, it's a Towneaway Shoals Road, or it's a Towne ninety-sixth Road, we're trying to identify some areas that were left off some initial list of roads, and we're getting those taken care of as well here, Port Seana.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Rob, and I totally agree with you, and from the statement you just made, that looks like where we need to be focusing our, our effort, is that when that truck pulls in there, we need to question him, what a dress did this come by? You look on GIS, and an eighty-year-old lady lives there, she's not hauling that stuff to the debris, she's paid them to haul it there, and they need to be charged, they need to pay if they're a commercial hauler. So, if we know that the large majority is that, then we need to put in a system to be able to verify that and stop that.
And that's in this policy, that we can verify residency or relation to the owner of the resident, that we can check that. We do that. Our, our scale clerks are, are pretty keen to, this, this looks like commercial, this doesn't look like residential, low-volume generator. We do it an awful lot, they'll, they'll question the address, where does it come from, typically on the second or third load, not typically on the first. They'll send them up to the office, we will do look, I even say, I said, "Tell me where it's coming from, so I can go up and spec and see where you got this from." And typically, that's when, when someone comes clean about what the actual circumstance is.
And typically, that's the big stuff, and, and I'd rather think we focus there than the man with, whether he's got four cubic, whatever, in his pickup truck or not, or is it five? I, I, I think that's where we need to, I think that's where we're being taken advantage of.
At the scale house, like, like commercially, again, we're, this, this isn't a new policy for the convenience centers, especially just a force in the policy we've always had.
And let me say real quick, y'all have done a great job. The, the, I have to hand it, for what we had and the situation we have, it's been a great, a tremendous amount, I've seen a lot of stuff moved, and they've all done a great job. But I just, again, my concern, Mr. Chairman, is, is just, is this the time to do this? And I totally agree with our council lady down there that says, "Let's do it all at one time, instead of do one now." Ms. Miller said, "Instead of this tonight, and then go another month." I think we just need to work it all together. Thank you.
Well, your response to me, and, you know, I don't know any more than Councilman Pruitt knows, or Mr. Allison knows, but it sounded like your response to me, though, was more in keeping with what I thought, because I, I mean, I put myself in this place. If on a Saturday, I'm cleaning up some of my property, a ton to the landfill, four cubic feet to the Corinac Convenience Center, that's probably about all I'm going to manage in a day. So, I, I guess what I'm questioning is, do we really need to push that aspect back? Because it seems to me like, in the last several months, we've continued to give grace, 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 pushback, pushback, and I just, as one voice, am kind of ready for us to get back to normal operation, but whatever the will of council will.
May I, may I suggest that approve the policy effective on the date that we start charging for halene debris again?
I mean, the reason we talked, had the last conversation regarding this and these was because we were losing money at the landfill.
We're getting ready to have that conversation, yeah.
So, well, if there's no further discussion, we can, we can move on, we can, we can-
No, we, 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 we need another, we need another motion in another second, because the, the first one was-
But what, what you're requesting of us is to approve this and put it into effect tonight.
That was, that was, yes, what's, what's on the policy, yes. But if you want to make contingent on the next, the resolution that's next, you know, I wouldn't have any problems saying, "Effective on the date that we start charging for Hurricane halene debris."
Some date to be determined in the future, not today.
Well, that's, the resolution is the next one, you will decide that date with the next item on the agenda, which is the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, can, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us, if we can, and I think we can, I would like to see us, I'd like to see Rob present the next resolution, so that we can hear what that is, so that we can consider both at one time. Madam Attorney, that is not a problem, correct? Okay.
Can we do that?
I don't know why you can't.
Well-
So, yes, you do have a motion.
We want to withdraw, we want to withdraw our motion.
The problem is, the motion on the floor.
Yes.
Ms. Miller withdrew her motion.
That's the problem.
And I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion, until further information.
All right, we, so we're clear.
So, that being the case, Rob can proceed, right? We can have the-
And then, at the end of this one, you want to come back and deal with, you want to come back and deal with one or both?
Yes. Don't let me forget.
We don't really have to worry about you, we have to worry about me.
All right. At, at the last meeting, and I'm going to, you have a resolution twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five dash oh four, about landfill fees in front of you. We had a previous declaration by the county manager, and a resolution by county council establishing that no fees would be charged for Hurricane- that no fees would be charged for hurricane-related debris. Uh, at the February fourth meeting, this past meeting, council voted to begin charging for hurricane-related debris on March third. Since the original action to not charge fees was done by resolution, a resolution is proposed to reverse the original action. So taking proper resolution to reverse a resolution is what you have in front of you. Again, staff recommends council to pass the, the resolution. Uh, again, we talked about how the landfill enterprise is funded. I'm gonna go through just a couple of these graphs that you've seen for the last couple of meetings, just real quick, of where we are. These are updated up until yesterday. This is vegetated debris as a whole, both haline and non-haline debris, starting before, uh, the hurricane, which is all the way to your left over here. Obviously this is when the hurricane occurred and then you see the steady decline, decline, decline. You see a little blip here at the end and then the last two weeks, you see a drop off back to original numbers. There is some rain in this period here, which is contributing to a little bit of that drop off, but it continues to, uh, drop off there. So again, the number of trucks is, uh, continues to go down. Here is the vegetated debris in weight in tons, uh, as opposed to number of trucks. Again, before pre-hurricane goes up, uh, it kind of builds up to this point, gets really super high. Seven hundred tons a day at one point, that is insane for what we do out there, but continually declines. Again, you see another blip here and this is a commercial blip. This is your commercial haulers causing this as well as some DOT material. Uh, and then, but then again, tapering back off this last, uh, week here. Uh, again, some rain effect there, but again, tapering back off, getting down to, uh, normal levels, pre-hurricane levels. Uh, again, revenue has dropped at the scale house. Uh, we are, this is, last thing I, I told you, it's over a thousand dollars a day. It's still over a thousand dollars less daily that we're bringing in revenue at the scale house on a daily basis. Hundred twenty-eight thousand total revenue lost to date. That's below what we budgeted. Revenue loss is not reimbursable for FEMA, so that one twenty-eight is a revenue loss that we are not gonna get back for FEMA. The hurricane debris accepted at the landfill, uh, since the hurricane, almost thirty thousand tons of vegetated debris at a cost of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars roundabout. And over five, five thousand, five hundred and eighty-two tons of construction debris at a cost of two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Total fees waived, over a million dollars, a million thirty thousand dollars of fees waived at the landfill. Again, that's not, we will be going to FEMA for that reimbursement. But again, our conference to be reimbursed that amount is, I'm, I'm not sure yet. The current route we're going will be reimbursed for that entire amount, but I, I don't think they're gonna accept that. We're gonna have to drop back and get some portion of that, which is gonna be much lower. So landfill continues to see, uh, since our last meeting, about twenty-nine trucks a day or about a hundred and one tons per day of hurricane debris. That's just in the last two weeks. Ninety percent of the trucks, I mentioned this early, over the last month now, that's the last four weeks, are commercial trucks. We are seeing an overwhelming amount of commercial trucks bringing this debris down, not residential. So again, I think we're on target to about hit that end of, end of February or March third deadline. Uh, we may go into, to March a little bit with some of the pickup out on the road, but at the landfill, that's where we're at. We are losing, we've lost a good amount of money. Each day that we're pushing back charging fees, essentially a thousand seventy-seven dollars, uh, we are losing, uh, daily without charging, uh, those fees. Uh, again, the resolution states we will start charging fees on March third. Um, as voted on at the last meeting by the council, we're asking you to pass the resolution with that same date as voted on last time. Questions, concerns, anything else you wanna talk about on the subject?
So last time I talked to you, threw up some numbers about where to call and, um, I never could find that. I've been asked that. And where can I forward all these emails and pictures and beautiful information I'm receiving?
Anybody can start with Public Works, the nine four two eight seven five four. There are several people in our office versed. We'll look at whether it's a county road, whether it's a state road, whether it's a town road. We'll give you individualized, uh, you know, um, information on the subject. That's the first number for anybody. If you know you live on the state road, you need to call DOT. If you know you live on a town aware Shoals road, you need to call the town. But you can start with us if you don't know that. We are answering dozens of, dozens and dozens of calls a day, giving individualized information on the subject. Answering all sorts of, all sorts of questions and emails.
We had, when we started this, a individual in a particular line. We no longer have that correct.
Say it. I'm sorry, say it.
We had a particular individual, I can't remember his name, that was assigned to just take these calls.
That is correct. That was Matt Mills.
Matt Mills.
He left employment with the county.
Okay, he's no longer with us, so nobody took that place.
So, no, we, we had a debris hotline, which we did for four-plus months or whatever. We were getting next to no calls on that debris hotline towards the end. Uh, we let the, we had some minutes on it, whatever, that, we let that expire. We just started taking all calls at either DOT or the county and, um, direct it to the office.
I, I comment what Mr. Pruitt said a lot ago. I think what you're gonna see is an increase in calls because people don't see the trucks running up and down the road like they did. And some of them still have debris. So it looks like to me the call volume is getting ready to peak again or is peaking. I know why Mr. Pruitt said I've gotten a bunch of calls lately.
My call volume has peaked.
It has gone up and, and I think it's people saying, well, all the trucks are gone there. Nobody's hearing it. Lems are still there, so they're ringing your phone off the hook. So, uh, I think, I think it went down and now it's gonna soar back up.
If you drive down Parkland, Parkland Place, where the, where the, um, where DOT has their contractors out there, seven days a week, sit there, I'm in this truck after truck after truck after truck after truck. It really, there's thirty-four different hauling units, uh, different contractors in, hauling units, uh, in the county right now, uh, still picking up waste. And again, they're, they're getting to a lot of that hard to pick up stuff, like the stumps and the large stuff that you hear a lot more of that. And I had a woman call me today that they had a cedar tree down the front yard and the crew came into her yard and got that cedar tree today. She was keeping it for someone else and they, they came and got a cedar tree that she didn't want them to get. Very large tree. Anyway.
And, and again, my concern is the now, you just showed us where ninety percent of it now is the commercial haulers. So that's who, they need to be paying the bill now.
I, I agree. That's why we, we picked March third.
The bill now.
I agree.
And I'm a lot more concerned about that than I am the little man pulled in with his truck and his trailer.
You know, one thing I thought about, you've said that multiple times, is there's also, you know, the people that are able to load their truck and all of them did it early and now at the end, it, the calls I'm getting may be from older people and just seeing it and it's not being picked up yet, they're not able to do it. And some of them are having to pay or ask commercially, you know. I don't know how that's working out, but I think that's part of what it is. The, the last graders are the people that can't, can't do it. But again, that's just my opinion, uh, based on the types of phone calls I've received.
There, we had an awful lot of resources in here, almost from the beginning, like T. Marubakon, who did an awful lot of that type work, free of charge, uh, to a lot of those residents and did it for months. And only recently did they just move out of the county. So for four or five months, those resources were available and those teams were out there looking for homes and we guided people to those teams and they did a lot of work out there for those. That resource was out there for the better part of four to five months.
Yeah, it was. Like in my mom's situation, it moved it to the road, but still.
Now we gotta get.
Yeah, I don't argue that point whatsoever. I'm just saying that is still at the road.
I, I would tell you that the, the contractor has committed to be here till it's all gone.
Okay.
And DOT has said, once the contractor's gone, we know there's gonna be some piles out there throughout the county. They're gonna take it. We're gonna take care of the, the county road ones. But, you know, stuff has to be out there now and, um, we need at some point to, to break, get kind of back to our normal operation.
I'd still like to see us post the numbers, you know, DOT, Public Works. You can do town ninety-six, town aware Shoals or whatever. Just put them out there, please.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know how I need to do this, but, uh, I, I do think we're gonna have to get back to normal operations. So I don't know how I need to do this, but I'm gonna make a recommendation or a motion that we do both of these as of March the third. And that gives us all of this week and all of next week to publicize it and let the public know that March the third, the rules change.
I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, so, so going back to, to the debris ordinance six point zero three. The staff's request was that we, that we approve it as presented tonight, but we have a motion that modifies that. And you're, you would like to extend that date out.
It's February eighteenth to be March third.
To March third.
In sequence with the.
Do we have to pass those several?
Yes.
Okay, so we just do one at a time.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second from Mr. Allison?
A second.
Mr. Templeton? So you've heard that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify. This is for approving it as, as Mr. Allison has stated. Okay, all right. And now to the resolution that was presented. To consider its change of landfill disposal fees, uh, for hurricane haline-related debris. I think we've heard that. Do I have a motion as it was presented by Mr. Russian to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve effective March third.
Mr. Reese, second. All in favor of that?
I have a quick.
I'm sorry, discussion.
Yeah, just, I'm still gonna vote opposed just because I feel like the date, you know, felt like we talked about six months and we didn't get there, so I'm, I'm still opposed to the date, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor by a sign in your hand? That passes six one. Okay. Thank you, Rob. Okay, our, our last, our last order of business, I, yeah, let me see. Is that our last order of business? Let me look in my notes. Yeah, it's going to be, cause we're gonna forego the, the appointments. So our last order of business is just a first reading only ordinance, twenty twenty-five oh two, regarding the governing of Greenwood County Board of Assessment Appeals. This is again a title only. Ms. Penny?
That's all? You've read it?
You don't have anything to say about that? No further discussion on that?
It is, um, uh, an update, a modernization of how, uh, the Board of Assessment Appeals can be put together.
Right, as we discussed earlier. Okay, everyone go with that. All right, then at long last, as I said, we're gonna forego the, the appointments. So Mr. Allison has told us he's working on one. Mr. Bishop's working on one. Maybe next meeting we'll have those. So district reports, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just like to say good evening to everyone and all is well in District One. So ends my report.
Mr. Allison.
Mr. Chairman, all is well in District Two.
You can always tell when people are ready to go home.
District Three is Bishop.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is my report. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
I've got a couple of things. I did make a presentation to a, uh, local women's, women's study group and they were very interested in learning more about, it was about county government. So I walked myself through that with them. They're very interested in some informational sessions to learn more about, how to read their tax bill, um, how to navigate GIS, do those kind of things. I just wanna put that be in your bond to think about possibly doing some lunch and learns in the future for the public. And then I will be attending the SC, along with some of my other council members, the SCAC Institute class on Thursday. And don't forget that the Clinton Extension is having their open house on Thursday. So ends my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pruitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please note that the annual Lake Greenwood Cleanup Day is scheduled for Saturday, March eighth, from nine to twelve. There is a, um, City County Planning Commission meeting next week. I know there are several items from my district on there. And also, lastly, February is Heart Health Awareness Month. Thanks to Susan for the gentle reminder. Personally, it means a lot to me as my father passed away from heart disease and my mom is probably on her fourth or fifth pacemaker. Just twenty-three months ago on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, I suffered a heart attack. Didn't have any warning signs, but knew something was wrong. Ended up with a hundred percent blockage in a circumflex artery and having two stents put in. Ironically, it was the day of a scheduled meeting and I was actually going to the cath lab about this time. And, um, still one of the few meetings that I've missed since I've been on council. I would encourage you to take the time to visit your local doctor if you have any signs or past family history. It can literally save your life. Ending on a Bible verse, Proverbs four twenty-three says, above all else, guard your heart. For everything you do flows from it. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Templeton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Even though it's been a long meeting, I hope you can pick up on the excitement in my voice. The food drive weigh-in will be at ten AM on Thursday. Abby has done a yeoman's job organizing, making this happen, getting this done. Corey and his group were unloading stuff today, uh, as was I and Abby. And, uh, uh, it's a couple of members of the Sheriff's Department and Luke and Parks and Recreation. We had a band of folks unloading, getting ready for the weigh-in. I'm not gonna give anything away, but we're gonna need a bigger scale. It was, uh, so, uh, I know that some of you, I know that Mr. Lane has got stuff. Cause as you know, due to, uh, from, from the suggestion of, of Ms. Miller, we're, we also extended, we kind of have a contest within the contest between county council and city council. I took a, I've got a separate pile out there marked for county council. So Mr. Lane, when you take your stuff tomorrow, please put it in the correct pile.
Yes, sir.
I will do that.
I will be out there again tomorrow because I've gotta drop some more stuff off. Uh, I'm not gonna start thanking people who we got stuff from today. We're gonna do all that when we're done. But Thursday's gonna be a huge day. So thank you all for what you've done. Abby, thank you so much for all that you've done. Like I said, we're gonna have a big time on Thursday. We're gonna be weighing for a while. Weigh-in is gonna be at the farmer's market, ten AM. Like I say, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. Gonna need a bigger scale. Thank you all. Ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. For myself, I too am very excited about, about the food fight, um, or the food drive.
Food Fight Twenty Twenty-five, baby.
Whatever we, whatever we call it. And, and let me say this. Councilman Pruitt doesn't know this, but I kind of went into his district without a visa and I apologize, dang. But I, I sent out a, a message last week, just a text, text message to some of my pickleball, uh, group friends. Some of those are in Grand Harbor, some of them are in, uh, Stony Point and across my district. And I have absolutely been amazed with the, the response and how generous people have been. And I spent most of yesterday, uh, picking up donations. So to all those people, anybody listening, you know who you are. Thank you for all of that. But, uh, I think Thursday's gonna be an exciting day. And I think some of you saw the efforts that were made for us by the Hodges Fire Department. I always have to brag on the Hodges Fire Department, cause those, those people really step up. And I was, um, I was told by, by a member of the department that when they had their fire services meeting last week, that just with that small group of volunteers, they raised a thousand and fifty dollars, um, to go out and buy to support our efforts. So, so much, so appreciative of that. I thought that was outstanding. So we'll see what happens on Thursday.
When you're done, when you're done, I was just gonna.
I'm done.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, the, I wasn't gonna give a whole lot away because of the groups, but since Mr. Lane. because of the groups, but since Mr. Lane threw out, I'm telling you, there have been a lot of organizations, churches, businesses and industries that have played a huge part in what we've been able to collect so far. It's, it's really, it's been a team effort and it's, it's really heartwarming.
It is heartwarming. So I will not forget this meeting. Madam Attorney, do you have anything for the good of the order?
Have you done?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Susan?
Yes, sir.
If nothing else, we stand adjourned.
Our picture. How do you take a picture of you and your red?
Hey.